Generic street projects, just because I was trying to flatten out the tax rate. So for instance, if I take out this stuff that's not really identified as anything specific. And then Community Center, City Hall, we plugged in. I'm not sure if that's an essential thing or not. There's something you gotta do, I know that. The only reason we plugged in those generic street projects was to keep the tax rate flat. Maybe you want to have a, because I figured in time there's going to be stuff that happens. And remember, anything we plug into this is not a commitment to do it. It's accounting for it and showing us what the impacts would be if we do it. So what happens is five years from now, you get to that next street project. You look to see if the assumptions made and the plan are still valid. If they are, you can do it. If we're wrong, we don't. And then we put this back up on the wall and replan.
I think that was our goal, wasn't to kind of have it every three year or whatever thing, where we at least, we could do something every so many years with infrastructure wise. So at least we kind of had a plan in place.
Yes, I would say that the street projects are needed.
Yeah.
And we have identified some. We just didn't take the time to pick which one was first. We have worked on that as well and have somewhat of a priority.
Yeah, so in seventeen, you know, you'd have four hundred and fifty thousand, let's round up, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for streets. And I like planning in this way because then you can tell your engineer in seventeen or the year before in sixteen, hey, look, we got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next year. What would be the best way, you know, what street is the best street to spend that money on?
Yep.
How many blocks does that do?
Well, it was about that much to do from the elementary to the end. That's only two and a half.
That's the full reconstruct, right?
That was, yeah.
Yeah, so if you only did, if your utilities underneath are fine, and you're just doing a, what do they call it, a reclaim?
Reclaim.
Yeah, or something like that, you might be able to do a lot more. And then keep in mind, we've got seal coating and hydrant stuff. Well, some this year, then again in seventeen, then again nineteen. That'll all be paid for with cash. Then in two thousand and twenty, we've got a million and a half. Oh, but that's offset also with, what did we think that might be, fundraising?
Fundraising and a couple of grants.
Couple of grants. So, you know, six hundred thousand and twenty, you know, if you don't do that project, that might be streets. We struggled with that one. Right? We didn't know quite how to handle the community center. So any input you have would be great.
How do you need?
Well, you're spending quite a bit each year on repair and upkeep. Right.
Right.
So, I mean, we can keep doing that. Or do we do something sooner rather than later? Or do we just shut her down?
Well, it was a consensus of the community, I think, when we had a couple of meetings that they didn't want any more spent on it.
No.
I think that's a consensus of the council also.
And for a plan that's not concrete, it's good to, I would rather have the higher amount in there than, I think it would cost more.
Can we wait till two thousand and twenty to do something?
That's the question.
Because in the meantime, you're still spending money in there.
Yeah.
Or could you just close it down for all use and not do those repairs? And then come twenty, it's either a tear down or a, tear down and rebuild or rehab it.
The repairs are mostly on the exterior, so it's a matter of pride to have it looking nice or not. And so I don't think we'd want to go too long.
Well, I'm not trying to push you either way. I'm just bringing it forward.
Well, the thing is, you don't know how much that exterior is going to cause problems on the interior either in time.
Right.
You know, because it's stuff growing, moisture getting inside and so on. So you just, you don't know.
Christina was nice enough to give me a tour of that building one day. And that big meeting area is really cool.
It's a neat, yeah.
You know? That's a tough one.
And then we have other projects that I have on the list that didn't make the cut for now, which, you know, Randy testing was also in on the meeting. And we talked it through quite a bit, but if any of you see any of those as higher priorities, now's the time to swap out projects or move the year around when you do that.
I think the sewer plant one there too is another, that gives us another thing to say to people. You know, people don't see that, but why, you know, why is my sewer rates going up? Well, we got an update with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, that's something obviously that needs to be done, but you know, no one sees But it does help to justify the raising of the rates.
Right. We do have to pay for things.
Yeah.
There's something that has to be done. There's only one way to get that money to pay for it other than with grants and stuff.
The big ticket items on there are pretty much mandated or required. The sewer and the water.
Right, in those first two columns. Which ones didn't make the cut on here?
The ones in the bottom that didn't, a number filled in here. And these all came from their spreadsheet, so we should match.
I only have three hundred thousand for sewer recertification. Should that be three fifty?
Yes. That, we found out it's going to cost a little more for that recertification. Could cost more than that for sure.
Let's see how negative we go.
And if we had to push something, one of these out, but twenty eighteen, which there isn't much, that might help a little too. There's a lot in seventeen. That's a pretty good chunk of one year.
And before we get to eighteen, I would like to do some investigating on contracting mowing out.
Investigating what's?
Contracting or mowing out. You know, we're hiring extra employees during the summer, we're expensing the mowers. I'd like to see what it costs to hire a subcontractor.
So then we don't need to worry about the repairs and things like that?
Once we get it done, then it's easy after that. We're probably good.
Now, twenty seventeen, is that when that would be up and running then, the street plan? Is that when that's scheduled to be up and running?
Yes.
Well, that'd be the year you constructed.
Okay.
Right, so I think two thousand and eighteen is the deadline.
Got you.
And I do have.
But that's not required, that part.
If you look up here in the top left, you'll see I've got a generic ten thousand dollars a year in your water and sewer fund for general repair work. See if I'm increasing that a year if it was flat. I have that increasing too, a couple percent a year. So it's ten thousand dollars, then next year it'll be ten thousand, two hundred and so forth. But the point is, is if you're not actually spending those repairs, I mean, I could zero that out. I always like to figure something in.
So you talked a lot about the increase for sewer and water. Did you have a recommendation for the levy increases then? Is that the same thing where it's better to have a gradual increase than all behind?
Let's look at that. That's sort of, okay, so here's your non, I should go over here. This column here is your non-debt related levy stuff. And then if you come over here, here's your scheduled debt service levies as they exist today. And then these would be the new ones associated with the things we just plugged in. So if we look at fifteen, okay, so there's four thirty-seven. So then next year will be four fifty-six, then four seventy-one, then four eighty-three. Now, if you can control your operational spending, you don't necessarily have to go as high as shown. But this is just making some general assumptions that everything's going to go up two percent a year.
You had said our operational spending was pretty much bearable and so we didn't have a lot to cover.
Is that the increase then on the right? Is that what that percentage means?
Yep.
That's our yearly increase there?
Yep, so you see the three percent from thirteen, fourteen, zero percent for this year. So it's, you know, it's three, four percent.
So there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing really out of line there, I don't see. I mean, there's nothing.
Yeah, there's no fifteen percent or anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And with some careful budgeting, you might be able to mitigate some of that.
Do we know, because I know we've kind of fought to get back, we were one of the higher, I believe, and I think we've kind of gotten ourselves back down compared to other cities, kind of where we were as far as.
Tax rate?
Tax rate. So that's what I was trying to come up with.
And here's your revenue.
We had the one year where it was like we looked high, but the new tax levies hadn't come through for the other cities, and we knew they were suddenly going to jump at us or above us.
Well, here's your levy for fourteen compared to the average. So you're levying quite a bit less, as we said, but your tax rate was higher.
Right.
By five points, just because of your tax base. And then that's how it broke out by all those cities. So it was in the upper half. I mean, as a surprise, Caledonian La Crescent are way over there. I mean, they have, what I like to say is it costs the same amount to fix a street per foot basis. They just got a lot more people to spread it across.
So it looked like those increases averaged probably two percent a year.
On the levy?
Yeah. Some above, some below.
Three percent, Colin?
And anything we do to increase the tax base, if we brought new construction, new businesses, new buildings, that would help the overall situation?
Not right away, because first of all, you build it this year, it doesn't hit till seventeen taxes. And then if they ask for any kind of assistance, that, you know, that pushes it off even further. And you could say housing, 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 but remember, people are consumers, you know, they require more services than businesses do. In fact, businesses pay more and get less service than residents. They pay less amount of money, but they get more services. So commercial is where it's at, if you can get it. And that's why you see a variety of towns with empty industrial parks with lots for next to nothing. I'm trying to entice that stuff. I wouldn't suggest that here. Well, we can't have been that good. You've got to, you've got to attack this somehow. Mike, what were you thinking on that?
The only, and the only thing that jumps out to me is that sixty at best, that, because we know it's the feedback we're going to get on that. But I mean, I, but then being able to justify it with a new plan, I think if we do a good job of explaining that, that, hey, here's what we're giving.
Here's what you're getting for that, for this increase.
And we're not just increasing it and building a plant just to say, hey, I got an idea, let's build a plant. We're being told we have to, we have to do this. We are, the government is saying, we have to build this plant. Well, we have to find a way to pay for it. And just like any business, when you have to pay for something, when you have to make that purchase, you have to be able to cover that expense. Of course, we'll do our best to find grants and whatever else out there. If anybody has a long loss relative with millions of dollars that wants to donate, we'll take that too, but we have to look at the reality of things.
And then it's, I think, our job to educate on that. That sixty percent seems like huge, but really a dollar amount, it's not that big. But we know how things get, the paper and different things, it's like, what did they put in there? Sixty percent. No, well, I mean, that's what, that's what's in there.
Right.
If we read them, type of articles, when you read that stuff, it's the percentage, it's never, sixty percent's only five bucks, it's sixty percent.
You've got to put in there sixty percent and then clarify with, this is what your, you know, a median household that does this, you know, spends this much normally would be.
Put the example in of, you spend as much on water, it's going to go up this way.
Education thing.
Right. So just to illustrate, if I plugged in a twenty percent bump as opposed to that sixty, see where the reserves go?
Gone.
I mean, it's already bleeding cash, so. So I just sat here and kept playing with it, and I was a little shocked that I had to go as high as I did.
And that's assuming we get a million dollars in grant funding.
Yes.
So we're already working hard to get a lot of grant funding, and this is where it's at. So the value and time spent to get these grants hopefully will pay off. We did get the thirty thousand dollar search grant to help pay for the preliminary study for the radium plant. So we have that. This one million would be later on in the project. And then for the wastewater plant, we can apply for funds there too. I don't feel as confident on those as I do for the water project.
On sewer, we don't have many grants figured out, so if you get anything there, it's bonus.
But I think if we would have to raise a little bit of sewer rate, I don't see, we're way down there now, and if, to do something like that, that's, that shouldn't be that hard. We haven't really done that, or raised that, so.
Well, we're catching up from a problem that was here before most of us, and should have been adjustments.
Yes.
What you're going to find, I think, as you pursue grants, particularly through the USDA, is they're going to look at two things. One, they're going to look at median income. In that case, you're going to look good, you know, because remember we're in the lower half. The other thing they're going to look at is what they call, they have an affordability ratio or something like that. Basically, they say you can afford, I want to say one point seven percent of your median income for each utility. So if I was to look up that, what was that median income for Houston? It was twenty-nine, two thirty-six. Don't let me forget that number. So if I take twenty-nine, two thirty-six, divide that by twelve, twelve months. Oh, dingbat, dingbat, sorry. Times point zero one seven divided by twelve. They're saying your water bill could be forty-one dollars a month. Well, we're only talking about raising it to thirty-three.
So that will hurt our potential funding.
They might say, you can get a grant, but you got to raise your water bill to forty-one dollars a month, not the thirty-three I'm showing as a bill. And then if I was to do the same thing for sewer, well, the sewer would be forty-one as well. And you, with the adjustment, you'd be close to that already, so.
So if we did not raise it, we might be leaving some grant funds on the table.
Oh, absolutely. Because that's the way they, my formula might be a little messed up, but I know that's what they look at, is, you know, you qualify for grants and loans. Now, the question is how much grant is dependent on, because they're going to say, well, you can afford X locally, and they use some formula. I want to say it's one point seven percent of median income. So you may not have a choice. Maybe that's another way you can sell it, is that if we don't raise these rates, we'll be paying full freight on two and a half million.
As opposed to, so it helps us because the grant, the grant provider says, your rates are right and we can help you with this because you're going in the right direction, you're not going to fall off, you know?
Who's the engineer here again?
Davy.
Davy, okay. I might ask that, I'm sure he knows.
Have a look at that. And if it's a bigger jump for water and sewer, and because of that, we're getting extra savings through this grant that will help our levy in the long run, then it's a good side of it.
We have to, we have to look at the long-term, term gain, you know?
Well, if I was to. You'd have to double it.
What did?
If we didn't get the grant.
If you didn't get any grant money, you'd have to raise it twenty-five bucks a month,
Does anybody have any more questions for Mike?
Are you okay with all of these, recognizing you're not committing to anything here, but do you want me to leave them all in? Or for purposes of public distribution, when people ask if you prefer? For instance, you're going to get a copy of this, right?
Okay.
And, you know, the public might want to see it. You might want to use it. Say, look, this is why we're doing what we're doing. But then they'll say, well, shoot, do you really need one and a half million for the community center? Or do you need this, or do you need that? Is there anything you want me to take out? Or do you want to just leave it in there? And you just want to tell people, these are in there just to see what the impact will be? We're not necessarily going to do them.
I guess it's always good to have them, this is my opinion. If it was someone walking up to me, I want to have as much information, whether it's real or possible, to be able to present to them. And like I say, that's me and the rest of you, your own opinion. But Chris is the one that's going to get probably asked the most with Audrey, you know? And then it's going to come to the rest. Sorry, Audrey.
I think we need to leave it in.
Yeah.
It's all been stuff that has been discussed.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's something that, you know, has been thought about and investigated a little bit, and I think we need to leave them in there.
And the generic street project, there's no real street project, it's just, this very well could happen. We could have a tamed-in sewer line, and we get in there and say, hey, the whole street's got to come up. You have to have plans in place for people and have them understand, this isn't a real thing, it's a perceived issue that could come up. You know, like I said, we've talked about the community center and whatnot.
And these other possibilities of sand and bugs, so.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it makes it easier for those of us that may have to explain it to someone.
Okay.
Well, I think too, looking at twenty seventeen, we got nine hundred thousand basically in street repair. Because Ellsworth, I believe, is a street repair. And then we have four hundred thousand for street reconstruction. Well, if we, even if we pushed one of those out a little bit, would that help us as far as having that percentage of increase?
In utilities?
Yeah.
No.
It would.
No, because the generic one for four hundred thousand is all taxes and assessment. The Ellsworth, we identified as a utility project. Even though you're doing street work, you have to tear the street to get to the pipe and then get the street back. And we felt by including it there, it makes it eligible for the grant loan package.
Got you.
So, yeah, and two, you know, I didn't even notice that, that you've got a generic street project. I've got that financed over ten years. I have that as sort of a conventional city financing. So, you know, potentially if you don't need anything, things could look like that. It's a lot better long-term.
I think he was suggesting maybe just putting it one more year, shifting it a year.
Oh, do it in eighteen?
Oh, yeah, I didn't know if that, if we pushed some of that out, if it would help her.
All right, so what you would do is in eighteen, you wouldn't let the tax rate dip like that. You would levy the difference and build cash to keep it flat tax rate. So long-term, it really doesn't make a difference, it's just whether or not you have that.
And I would assume every year you push it out, the price of it goes up anyways, right?
The model, the model figure's five percent a year.
Right, so there's the inflation. That's why you have a billion-dollar stadium versus a million-dollar stadium going up, kind of thing.
I just looked at that year and said, yeah, a lot of things happened in one year. If we could push that around a little bit, then you could maybe wouldn't have to give them, put a sixty percent increase, don't they?
Yeah, what's affecting the sewer rates is, if I go down here to the revenues, I don't know that we're using sewer increase, oh yeah, here we go. Well, that's cash, it doesn't matter, I can zero that out. We're not pledging sewer revenues to any payment of new debt. So the sewer rate increase is just to get the thing cash flowing here.
Yep, take care of itself.
The water is being used to pay for this big baby. Well, plus cash flow. If I was to take this, how much would we have to do water if we didn't have to do this? Let's answer that question. All right, we might need that big bump, but maybe that could be not even that. Maybe we don't need quite that big of a bump. So maybe half, might be able to do half of, if you didn't have that big treatment plant scenario in face.
Yeah.
You can do half as much.
I think it's very realistic, and I think that those generic street projects, which actually we do kind of have a schedule, plenty of them to fill in. I don't think we're ever going to, we're not going to get ahead of that real soon. It's going to take one of those projects every three or four years to get caught up.
That, because I mean, actually, we don't even have one scheduled that in three. You know, if we go to twenty twenty, it's not there yet, so.
So we've already scaled back. I think you had the next one in twenty twenty-two, next street project.
Yep, and then, you know, this community center, you got six hundred thousand there for that too. So that would be your borrowing hole right there, that second number. So if that doesn't happen, or if it happens differently, maybe that frees up some street work in twenty as well. And if we did that, maybe we'd go ahead and combine, instead of doing one every two years, maybe we'd combine that and double it up. I don't know. Figure that out five years from now. Okay, so just to summarize, we're going to include it all, as shown. Remember, this money you're putting away into capital project funds, you're going to do it this year, you're already budgeted, you're going to budget for it next year in sixteen, then in seventeen, you're going to skip it. We're going to use that to help pay for debt for one year, and then you'll pick it back up in eighteen again. Well, this is, this was easy. Well, I can't say it was.
If you wouldn't had that, if you wouldn't have to do that big bump, it's easy. That's the only thing that really, but I think that's a lot of us just have, are us educating there. Because that number looks huge, but it's not as big as it looks.
The sooner you make the bump, the better. But the model's not assuming the bump until next year.
Right.
So you've got several months here to sell the idea. All right, well, that was about an hour. And usually decent takes two hours, so I'm kind of shocked. Okay, so what happens? What happens now is if we're, if we've got consensus here, I don't need any motions or anything, I'm going to take this back. You're going to get a PDF electronically of all this stuff, as well as you're going to get transcript of documents, a folder with all the stuff in it. And then I'll also prepare sort of a summary report laying out the major assumptions and to-do list for the city. Do this, do this, do this. And then again, in the future, there's no cost, you know, a year from now, we want to look at it, put it back up on the wall. I just usually need, you know, a couple of weeks' advance notice to update the model for actual activity for the past year.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, well, thanks so much for coming down and.
Is it what you were expecting, or sticker shock, or what do we got going here?
It is what it is. You're not, you're just telling us what you see, what the numbers tell you. So we've got to make decisions based on your information.
Well, I think, I think that, that plant is a huge benefit for the town.
It is.
Houston's known for, you know, rusty water, the poor water quality.
Complaining about the water.
It's something that we.
I never heard that.
Yeah, and we're just known, we're known for it. And you go to fire department, you go to a fire and we dump our water, and everybody's like, that's Houston water. Yeah, I mean, they know. Our stuff is red and monkey. So I mean, it's huge, I think that's a huge benefit to the city to have that treatment plant.
Does it smell?
It does, yeah. Yeah.
Tastes funny, so does everyone buy water bottles?
There's people that, you know, there's, I'm sure that a lot of people have filter systems, but.
It depends on what part of town you're in. You know, if you're at the end of the line, or in a line that doesn't get a lot of circulation.
That's worse.
It might get worse.
And it generally gets stirred up when there is a fire call, and they have to pull a lot of water. That's really when it gets bad.
Yep. And the different, some people are having different problems than that, that's because of where they are on a line. They have a line that sits kind of backwards. Yeah, doesn't loop properly, so. Everybody has their own separate issues, but generally speaking, we have a higher end content.
I guess I'm used to it, I don't really.
Yeah, oh yeah, living here.
I don't know, it's not a big deal, but people complain about it.
My water's good. Nothing to complain about.
I really don't either, I'm at the top, I don't get it.
I mean, I went from, I went from growing up in the country, you know, drinking well water to drinking city water, and so there was, there was the jump, the difference. And so I'm just used to it now. I don't know. And so I'm just used to it now, I don't know.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions for Mike, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Okay, is there a second? All those who favor signify by saying aye. Prove meeting adjourned.